Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the planning board meeting of January 28th, 2020. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
All right, first on the agenda tonight, we have an A and R. And I think this is the A and R we had at our last meeting that didn't have a locust map on it. It's 366 Tremont Street. It's map 128, lot 6. Kristi and Scott Kendrick. And we have a discussion and possible vote tonight. So I think we're just gonna, just sign as long as the locust map is on. All right, so what we have in our package is without locusts. You can't do anything. All right, I'll go this way and then back.
Yeah, we get additional copies. How many copies do we have?
We have to take a vote to endorse, right? Make a motion to endorse the Form A.
That's right.
As it now has the proper stuff on it. For 366 Tremont Street.
That's right, we didn't approve it.
It's a motion to endorse.
Second that. A motion second for the discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so unanimous.
We'll need to sign all of them, plus the Myla.
Does Kelly sign or not?
No, I can go.
You got them right here. Is Jen folding them?
I'm sorry.
No, I just handed everybody one in case they wanted to see them.
This is here.
Oh, you got them. Okay. And this one has to go over here?
No.
You get everything.
Bring it on. All right, this one's full now.
That one's good for you. I'll take the magic stick.
Great. This one is.
No, this one's coming your way. Those you did. This one's your way.
That's you. This is you. This is the big deal.
Wait, this one, do we need this one too?
Is that the one with the locust map on it?
Yes.
Do that one as well. One more. All right, next we have, and we had talked about this, I think, in our previous meeting, the approval of a rear lot. And this was on Forest Street, map 50, lot 8. Tonight, we have it before us for a discussion and possible approval of the rear lot. And as soon as Jim gets back, we'll talk about this.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Have a great night.
You too.
Good evening.
We haven't seen you for a long time. Nice to see you again.
Nice to see all of you.
Thought you were avoiding us.
I was not avoiding you. It's my favorite place to be on a Tuesday night.
We missed you last time.
I know.
Your fill-in was awesome.
Good.
Just so.
Good, she's great. I had full confidence in her. Does this one have a date on it?
Oh, that's right, yeah. Before you take it out, we gotta date that too. And the copies.
Good pickup.
I'm sure you don't want to take up more time than you need to.
Want to position on the planning board?
Not at this time.
There's one available.
I'll think it over.
128.
128.
2020.
We keep the copies, so those can be dated. Those will also have to be dated. Unless somebody put the date on it. And I didn't put the date on, so. The Myla has to go to the registry, so.
Thanks, Jim.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Sarah, sorry to interrupt you.
No problem. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Sarah Sterns with Beals &amp; Thomas. This is a public meeting, as opposed to a public hearing, and a, as Will mentioned, my colleague Stacy Minahan was here at the last meeting to discuss the classification of a rear lot. There were a couple of action items that came out of the last meeting. And just to kind of recap, the property is made up of nearly 160 acres. It's agricultural land. It has 60 feet of frontage on Fuller Street. And we have been speaking with the town planner, the building commissioner, the ZBA, and now the planning board. And if you remember way back, we talked informally about this, just to try to discover a permitting path that would make sense for a potential solar array and a portion of the bogs here. We have been combing through the zoning bylaw, and specifically Section 2340 regarding rear lots, and feel that this particular site meets the definition of rear lots. We've gone through the provisions, the multiple provisions, and I know that Stacy went over them with the board at the last meeting. One of the points that we needed some clarification on, I believe, was access versus frontage. I think, you know, to be completely honest, the bylaw is a little bit vague in terms of whether or not these solar projects really fit the definition of needing frontage for these projects. But since there's a little bit of ambiguity in discussions with the building commissioner, you know, we're taking a conservative approach to, you know, to confirm that there is a permitting path going forward. So really what it comes down to, and I'll flip the board over, I'm sorry, this is a little mangled from my car, but this is the property as a whole. Everything's in Carver, but it's close to the middle borough town line. The bog 1 and bog 2 are the areas earmarked by the landowner, Mr. Johnson, for a potential solar array. The frontage is on Forest Street on this side, with the existing access is off of Fuller Street, something that's been used for generations for the cranberry operation as well as earth The preference would be to continue using the existing access off of Fuller Street. In speaking with the landowner, the, if the project were to move forward and potentially be approved, a deed of easement would be formalized for the life of the solar arrays, to make sure that that's on record. Forest Street does not provide the best access, although it is possible to put an access road where the frontage is. There are numerous reasons not to do that. But given what the board talked about with my colleague at the last hearing, we just put together a very simple exhibit which shows the area off of Forest Street where the existing frontage is, that we could put in access. And we just used the Carver Fire Department dimensions for this layout. 12-foot wide road with two-foot shoulders on either side. So it's essentially a 16-foot wide road, which is what's shown here. Could we do it? Could we come in off of Forest Street? Yes, we could build that. Would the abutters be happy? Absolutely not. It's not the best access point. And, you know, going back to what the bylaw says, yes, that's what the bylaw says. Put an access road where your frontage is. But, you know, we just wanted to show the board that that could be done. And this is just a schematic overlay of where the proposed solar array would be on those two bogs that I pointed out on the other exhibit. So that's really just what I wanted to show you. That's the only kind of new development that we, you know, we took what the board said at our last meeting together, and just wanted to formalize that a little bit, just to show that, you know, strict adherence and compliance with the language of the bylaw could be done. You know, I would think that if the board is in agreement, that, you know, we've met the criteria in Section 2340 for a rear lot, we would proceed with our typical site plan review, special permit, design, and permitting path. And I would think that, you know, we could certainly show that as a potential access, and then just go through all of the reasons why the landowner and the applicant would prefer to keep the access off of Fuller Street. And if anyone's been over to the Fuller Street access, I mean, it is like a highway. I spoke with Jesse Boyle, since you last met. He had already driven out there at my request, just to take a look at it, so I could get his initial feedback. I think his comment was that it was a robust road, and they had no access issues from Fuller Street. I did ask him just to kind of elaborate on, you know, whether or not Carver Fire had any interest in looking at an access from Forest Street. And he sent over a brief memo today, really just corroborating what I'm talking about, that the access off of Fuller Street would certainly be preferable to Carver Fire. So, you know, I just want to make sure I'm being clear with the board about that. In our discussion with ZBA, we had also spoken with a couple of Forest Street abutters that came concerned about a potential access over here. And I said the same thing. We have no plans, no intention to do that. We do potentially need to show that it could be done, just to, you know, reassure the planning board that this, it's a viable option if push came to shove and we had to do that. So that's really all I wanted to touch base on tonight. I'm happy to go through the provisions of the rear lot definition and show how the, we feel the site meets that definition. And really, for the building commissioner to proceed with what we're talking about, he just needs agreement from your board, so that we can proceed with a real design, and really kind of get into the nuts and bolts of an actual application.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Jim, would you like to add anything further?
Sure. So in your package, you have a memo from, a rise memo from Bob Francis, the building commissioner, as well as, should have a letter from Jesse Boyle of the fire department in there. And so, over the last 10 days, Bob and myself, and we met with Bruce, the chairman, and had discussions about this. And so we went and we took a look at the definition of frontage, and the kind of the key phrase mentions direct access to a building site. So we said, okay, well, what does that mean? So we went to the definition of building, and in essence, that's defined as, it's more or less a habitable structure. It's supposed to be a residence, a hospital, or an educational facility, retail use. And then a structure is something like a solar array. So, you know, we have other locations in town where we have access, you know, we have other structures such as, you know, telephone towers, and we have pertinent uses on cranberry bogs, you know, the pump sheds that don't have frontage on a, you know, way, they're all structures. So I think, so, you know, just to make a difference between what a building is and then what a structure is, a structure requires, you know, kind of a direct access to it. A building requires direct access to it, you know, from a road frontage. So Bob looked at that, and he agrees that, yes, you know, he doesn't see any problem with, you know, this being approved as a rear lot, because, you know, there's another access way in there that the, you know, it's already been approved at a fire department, but when the project is being reviewed, the fire department also has to look at that requirement for front, for access to the solar site. So, as I have, if anyone has any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Mr. Chair. Throw you to Sarah. So I thank you for doing exactly what I was looking for, because now, in my opinion, you meet the requirements of the rear lot. Because can an access be made from Forest Street? Yes. And that was the hangup.
Okay. You're welcome.
So now you, in the opinion, in the opinion of the bylaw, you meet the requirements of a Form A law, I mean, the rear, rear lot. So, that's what I was looking, that's what I tried to get through last time.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any of the planning board members?
Not a question, but a comment. I see Will's point, but like you said, the bylaw says the access road needs to be where the frontage is. So you can put one there, but without it being there, it doesn't seem to meet the bylaw. So in this case, this might be an example where the bylaw should be looked at and changed, since solar is new. And I think this might be an issue better served by the ZBA, because it was in front of them, they had questions. Because without that access road being there, technically, it doesn't meet it, so it should be looked at.
I think the argument against that thought is, and not that it's not a good thought, and that's exactly what the bylaw says, is that we're not, there's not a building being put on the, on the project. It's a solar panel project. So it's a different animal. But, so I think it meets all the qualifications for a solar project. But yet, I've discussed this with Jim too, and we have to look at the bylaws, because there are a lot of places where bylaws need to be looked at and possibly changed for solar projects. And I understand what you're saying.
Mr. Chairman, Jen, I can also add to that. In our discussion with the ZBA, so, we would go to ZBA if there was no way to find a permitting path. Everyone's preference is to find a permitting path that can comply with the bylaw through your special permit and site plan review process. That's, you know, going to the ZBA for a variance is definitely not the preferred path. And you have to meet very specific variance criteria. So when, once we started talking about it with them, and realized that there was a better permitting path, even if, you know, we needed to request the board to exercise some discretion on something like this, because it was the logical thing to do, if we could show that, yes, it is buildable, but because we have a much better alternative for ecological reasons, abutter reasons, safety, emergency safety reasons, all of these things that we can tick off, it's a much better option, and gives the planning board an alternative that is preferable. So, in my understanding, in talking to the ZBA, which, who sent us back to you, I, we still have an open, impending case with them, depending on this discussion. So our preference would be to permit it, as we have done with all of the other solar projects that we've talked about together, and, you know, talk about the different options. As long as we can meet this rear lot criteria, and then talk about options within that with you, with, as the board, as a regulatory authority, I think that is a preferred path. We would like to do that, the applicant and landowner would like to do that. It makes much more sense. I think it's better for the project, it's better for the town, and we would prefer to withdraw our petition for variance.
Just one question on the, regarding the memo from Bob Francis. On the second page and, second paragraph, is my opinion that a solar project does not have, does not have to have frontage as defined by the zoning bylaw, so long as there's adequate access approved by the Carver Fire Department? So what is that? I mean, it has to have frontage, solar project?
And it does.
Okay.
And it has enough, so the rear lot provision for frontage is 40 feet. So you just have to have at least 40 feet of frontage. You don't have to have the zoning district 150 feet. This project has, this site has 60 feet. So we meet that criteria as far as the rear lot provision is concerned. I don't want to put words in Bob's mouth, but his interpretation, it seems like, of the bylaw, which, like I said in the beginning, it's ambiguous whether or not solar, and I know it's a sensitive topic, so we don't need to get into that whole discussion, but I think that's a section of the bylaw that could, as Mr. Chairman was saying, could use some clarification specific to solar.
There is frontage on this project that's not?
There is.
Right, there's linear feet frontage of 60 feet where 40 is required. But then, you know, if you poke into the, you know, the definition in the bylaw, what, you know, the whole definition of frontage is, includes this direct access to a building site requirement.
So would changing the access road affect the frontage?
Changing it?
I mean, putting it off of?
We're not, nothing we're proposing will affect the frontage.
Okay. You still have the 60 feet, the other way.
That will remain as it is today.
So that was kind of interesting wording.
Well, I think, you know, in discussions with the, with the building department, he, his thoughts are that a solar project didn't need frontage. Whereas, a couple of years ago, the person that was doing his job said that you needed frontage. So, but that's where we have to look at this. I mean, a lot of these bylaws, and it's, I mean, it happens everywhere in every town. I mean, it's even happening in government today. You know, there are gray areas and everything, so you need to interpret it, you need to look at it, you need to think, you know, how it's going to affect the neighborhood and everything else. And I think in this particular case, with the neighbors not really wanting a road up there anyway, there's no building that's going to be built out back there. If there was a building being built back there that needed access daily, then this would be another discussion. But when, if you're just going to have a solar project, you're going to have vehicles coming through the back of the property to build it, then there aren't, there isn't going to be daily traffic going there every day. So you just kind of, and whereas a driveway could be put through there, there are some wetlands there, so the wetlands would have to be moved and changed, or a bridge would have to go over the wetlands. So in my mind, you gotta figure what, you know, how is this going to, what's the benefit here? You know, is it easier to go through the property in the rear and then leave the linear frontage as it is, that's not going to change? And it's not going to disturb the wetlands, it's not going to disturb the neighbors? So I just think that, in this particular case, it's a better way to go.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may. So the question in front of the board is whether or not we think that the property in question is a rear lot. And not looking at a solar development or anything else like that, but the question is whether or not it meets the requirements of a rear lot. The thing that was hanging me up on that was proven to me whether or not they can get access off of?
Forest.
Forest Street, which they did. So under the bylaw, they meet all the requirements of a rear lot. Leave the solar project out of it, leave the development out of it, all that. Does it meet the requirements of a rear lot? That's a question that you're going to ask yourself, and per the zoning bylaw, it does. Now, if we make that determination that it is a rear lot, then they decide to come in front of this board to do a project, it'll be up to them to determine whether or not access is going to come off of Forest Street, or access is going to come off of the other street, or how is it going to be in the best interest of how it's going to be used. But that would be, that's a totally different discussion inherent than what is being asked of this board now, is to determine whether or not it meets the requirements of a Form A lot. I mean, a rear lot. I'm good. I was just reading the Form A. That's my four cents worth.
All right, do we have to vote on this? Or, I guess we're going to have to, just to see what the opinion of the board is.
So I'd make a motion to define this, this Forest Street, map 50, lot 8, as a rear lot, as a determination from this board as a rear lot. That's my motion. Excuse me.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion second. Any further discussion?
So we're just voting on, is this considered a rear lot?
Yeah.
Period.
That's it. It has nothing to do with any potential maybe could be project or not.
Got you. Okay.
So we have a motion second, and further discussion? Okay, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
All right, so it's three to one. Or four to one. Oh, did?
I would vote because Kevin's not.
Oh, that's right, Kevin's not here tonight.
Kelly's voting in Kevin's voice tonight.
This is not a, not a special permit.
Not a special permit.
No.
Right. She can, she can fill in, yeah, three to one. You can fill in on the special permit cases.
Okay.
Sorry. Just special permit, yeah.
Trying to get us some votes.
I love it.
So three to one, that is an agreement.
An agreement, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, next we have a bunch of public hearings on solar projects. And some are to be continued, and some we're going to hear tonight. The first one is on the application of Borrego Solar Systems, and this is on 19C Ward Street. And could you just inform us what's going on with this project, Jim?
Sure.
Please.
They've been trying to schedule a meeting with the
They've been trying to schedule a meeting with the Butters, and, uh, so they, they thought they were going to have a meeting last week, but then that got canceled, so they're still working on setting up a meeting. So they requested a continuance until, uh, the next meeting, which, excuse me, which I think is, uh, the 11th, February 11th.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to continue the public hearing for Borrego Solar Systems for 19C Ward Street, uh, February 11th at seven o'clock.
I'll second.
Have motion and second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. All right, and then, uh, next we have an application of renewable energy, and, uh, this is Zero Pond Street. So this one we're going to hear tonight.
Yeah, we're here.
Okay, so I'll just read this. On the application of renewable energy, so that the public has a, a better understanding of what we're working on here tonight. The, on the application of renewable energy development partners LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 2230, 3100, 3580, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw, its assessors map, uh, 107, Lots 1-4, to allow the construction of a large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation located at Zero Pond Street, Carver, Mass. The project consists of a solar energy facility that includes two components, both located on a portion of the plus or minus 560-acre Juan Holt Bog complex owned and operated by AD Makepeak Company. The two projects' components include, uh, plus or minus, uh, three-megawatt agricultural canal solar canopy and a plus or minus 1.4-megawatt dual-use ground-mounted array in a residential agricultural district. Good evening, Sarah.
Good evening. For the record, Sarah Sterns with Beals &amp; Thomas, Hank Ramey and Tom Melahan from Renewable Energy, whatever it is, Development Partners. It's a long name. So this is our third hearing. Um, I do have smaller versions for you guys if you would like.
Sure.
You want the little ones? Okay, so just for the record, I just handed Jim, um, some revised plan sheets, um, as part of the set that we're, that we have been submitting and revising as per our, I'm handing them off. Yeah, as per our peer review with Fussin O'Neill, comments from the board, comments from Butters, everybody's comments. So this is the smaller version.
Love it. Small ones are better.
It's harder to read, but it's easier to try to read it.
Yes.
I got the big one. Um, I also have, so, um, what's on the big board is what I'm going to give you too, um, and that's this from Jim's file. They're giants, so don't, they're brutal. But, and again, not easy to read, but at least they're functional, so we can go through them. This is what we put together for the abutting properties, either cross-sections from all of your Butters on Bunny's Road and, um, Bow Street, that would have, um, the, at least a partial view of portions of the array. So, um, the last two pages on this second set that I just handed out are the most useful for this discussion. That's the overview for the last page, really, last two pages. That's the overview of the section that we've been kind of focusing on, uh, related to the dual-use ground-mounted array in the northern part of the property closest to the Bunny's Road area of the adjacent land, and then the southern piece. And you, you can see by looking at this, um, the cross-sections are in pink and they just correlate to the earlier pages. So, um, just to kind of go over that a little bit, since this has been the focus of the last few discussions, um, the applicant has put a lot of effort and time into achieving 100%, uh, 100% screening from the adjacent properties. And we know from being out there, those of us who went out there, that even the homes that are the closest or, or most visible from, uh, from the project site have an obscured view. But even that was important for the applicant to make sure that we did everything that we possibly could to achieve 100% screening. So the changes that have been made since we last talked, as I talked, is that we have added, um, additional plantings in some areas, and we've added berms, um, in kind of the key areas where there was a partial view, um, seasonal view, because this is the time of year, really the only time of year that some of that view shed is a little bit open from some of the areas. The other, um, change, significant change in terms of screening is that the end of the canal canopy, um, down by 42 through 48 Bow Street has been removed from the proposed project. You can see in green on the large-scale map, that's where the berms have been added. And on the cor- correlating cross-sections, you can see now a little bit better from that view how the grade has been enhanced related. Um, in some areas, a topographic relief already lended itself well to screening as well as the plant, as well as the existing vegetation, but we've added material in a couple of key areas just to ensure that, um, those views will, will be completely hidden. So those are kind of the couple of changes that you see in the plans that I just handed out. We've also gotten a final review memo from Fussin O'Neill. No outstanding issues. Essentially, it was just a list of suggested, um, conditions, um, for the decision to incorporate if the board just chooses. I don't know if you recall, but, uh, Carver Fire had issued a memo early on. Um, they weren't able to get through the gate to look at the access points, but, um, again, per my request, Jesse sent a second memo. Um, again, no access issues. Um, there is a small access road proposed as part of the ground-mounted array, which has been designed within the, um, Carver Fire dimensional requirements, so no issues there. I think his only comment on the road, the access road from Wenham is that some brush need, would need to be trimmed just to make it fully accessible. It hasn't been used for a long time, so it just sort of grown in. But in terms of the, um, driveway itself, um, no issues there, and he, um, put that in his memo. So that was really kind of what has come of that discussion. One of the things that was discussed at the last heat, hearing, um, specific to the resident at 48 Bow Street, which, um, that Butter, I think, was here at the last hearing, and, and we have spoken to him, um, we were requested to tag the trees slated for removal down near that property for the shade management associated with the canal. That was done the following day after our last meeting. Tom went out and met with him, um, tagged the trees, tagged where the revised end of the canal would be, and added a 14-foot post out where the canal is proposed, that, that could be viewed from that abutting property. And Tom, if you want to talk about your discussion with him, I wasn't there, so I don't want to, uh, put words in your mouth, but from the report, it sounds like that neighbor was pleased with all of those items that were done. And if you want to add anything else to that, certainly.
He, he seemed happy with what we proposed, uh, he stood on his back porch and the top of the post wasn't visible. And then we, subsequent to that discussion, added, added a berm so that there could be, there could be no.
Right. So you couldn't see it in the field, but based on their analysis, you should be able to see it? You know, like, the practical issue was you couldn't see it in the field, but the topography and, and, uh, and the cross-sections that Sarah did said that, well, you should be able to see that. So to avoid all doubt, we, we put a berm right there and some plantings on it, so, so you couldn't see it. So he was happy without that, but again, just, we were wanting to be belt and suspenders, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
In connection with that, I did send an email to Mr. Goldstein, resident 48 Bow Street, and he responded back that he was satisfied with everything that he discussed with you guys.
Thank you.
Satisfied.
So.
Where's the berm going on that, as far as?
Can you see the green? So the, the blue represents the solar panels over the canal. The green is what we've added for berms, vegetated berms. And, uh, you may not see it on your copy, it's a little far, but you can see the existing and proposed tree lines. So that area, there's some selective clearing associated between, um, the properties and the, and the canopies, just because of the way the direction needs, you know, um, fall hazard from the trees and shade management so that it's not directly shading the panels. And because there's some selective clearing, we decided to add that, increase that topographic elevation.
We originally, you recall the discussion we had, it was our contention that after we selectively clear those areas, the understory is going to come back more, uh, forward, basically, and be a more effective visual screen, but, you know, remember Bunker pointed out that that would take time, you know, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be an effective screening, uh, solution on day one. So what is an effective screening solution on day one is a berm, a vegetated berm, so that's the route we went. So now the understory will come back and thicken up like it, like it always, like we suspected it always will, but in addition, there'll be a vegetated berm so that there can be no view shed.
So the berm ends before his property line, if I'm, if I remember correctly?
Yeah, it actually, yeah.
Did it extend?
Like if you extrapolate his property line, the berm would actually go a little past it.
Okay, 'cause I know that was one of the questions, if he could look to the right.
Yeah.
To that berm.
That's why we did it, because he, he could walk to the left part of his yard and look right, so we kind of wanted to, you know.
Okay, yeah, that was, that was, I know it suggested, okay, perfect, that's awesome, thank you. That's good.
And it was, I mean, if we're going to build a berm, we might as well make it comprehensive, right? So.
Right.
End it arbitrarily here and build it 20 more feet this way, just to, so we did, we took our.
We added, we added a cross-section from his lot over, we actually did it.
Over, that's right. You pointed out that we, we, because we cut the canopy off, we, we removed the cross-section from his house, but in hindsight, that was probably not smart, so we added it back in. So now you can see what his, uh, view shed would be, and you can see that his view shed is interdicted by a, a berm.
And then those other homes on Bunny, Bunny's Way, is that where it was?
Bunny's Road.
Bunny's, Bunny's Road.
Yep.
There's a berm going there as well?
So it's a, it's actually a, a handful of, of screening solutions. So there is a, there is a berm, um, a vegetated berm and a fence, um, to do the same kind of 100% absolute screening on day one. But in addition to that, we're, we're doing some plantings in front or between the homes and the berm just to break the berm up visually so that a Butters not looking out in the northern berm, vegetated berm.
Or the fence.
The fence, I mean, you mean the fence. In front of the fence. Right. And then we're also planting up on the, on the property line at Bunny's Road, doing some selective plantings, and I think they're, they're on the cross-sections. There's an, actually, there's a sheet with the detail. It's in here, it's in here. I think it's the, it's the very last page.
C 2.5. It's the very last one.
C, C 2.7. The very last sheet shows like a bunch of selective plantings. So we're doing a combination of things, berm, fence, and plantings.
So that house that we had looked at, I think it was the, right?
Yeah. You'll, between him and the project will be right out of property line, there'll be plantings, and then right at the project, there'll be a berm and a fence.
Okay.
And that's what he'll see. He can't see past that to the solar.
So that was really the only one that had the correct.
Yeah, but we, you know, that's what it looked like on-site, but by their, um, engineering, there's actually more folks that had technically a, a view shed, so we saw their issue too. Because again, it's, it was all at least partially instructed, but just to be.
And again, most of the project was going to the right, so they were actually going to still look out there. They were just going to see the canal work, still see bogs, but to the right is where the project, and that'll shield that.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, Hank and Tom are right, but this sheet shows kind of the zoom-in version of the added berms and plantings, along with the planting key and plan that shows species, number of plants, et cetera, as well as the size.
So what I was just describing, so here's Bunny's Road, so we've got some plantings proposed here. Here's that, that one, what was it? The one we saw was 68, with the blue shutters?
Yes.
So that's the, um, Mr. Hoffman, this is the, that's the house that you could see from the site though with the blue shutter, 68.
Six, okay.
So you can see for, for, to, to mitigate his view shed, there's some plantings right here on the property line, on, on, on our, um, on Makepeak's property, and then there's also a berm and a fence between him and the project.
Perfect.
And there's, there's plantings in front of the fence over there as well, so there's plantings by the property line, there's plantings before the fence, then there's a berm and a fence. So that you don't.
We dare anyone to see that, bro.
So as I said, they've thought about this long and hard and looked at it from, I think, every single angle.
Every single Butters, that's for sure.
Yep, uh, particularly all the spots that we noted in our site visit and throughout the process, and have really done a good job to incorporate multiple elements for screening. That's all I had for an update. Do you guys have anything else you want to add?
No, I guess the only thing we would, we would, uh, we would throw out there is, you know, we're, like, we've said all along, we're locals, so we're, we like to be proud of the projects we get permitted, we're going to be here for a long time. So if there's anything we, if the board feels we haven't, we feel that the project is 100% compliant with the bylaw, that it's, we've, we've designed this project to be fully compliant. So if the board feels that we haven't met that standard in some regard, we'd love the opportunity to fix that, um, before you vote on it. So that's the only thing we would put out there.
Thank you. Any questions? Oh, Jim?
Just a quick question. In the last peer review letter from Fussin O'Neill, it mentioned the possibility of need for a waiver, um, for where the overhead wire, um, may or may not be necessary, but they thought that you should ask for the, and recommended that you just request a waiver just in case, you know, based on what your, your dealings with EverSource is, um, that you may just have that waiver in place. So I put that in, in, in the.
I, I agree, Mr. Walter, I think that's, I think it's appropriate. That, the, the number of overhead poles will be a handful up by the easement, everything else is underground, so if there's a, if, if there's a waiver that's required for that handful of overhead poles up there in a, like at an interconnection point, then yes, we would like to request it.
I think we did request it already.
Okay.
In the various iterations for that exact reason, just in the event that we do need it, um, and Fussin O'Neill agreed that it made sense to have that in place, should that be necessary, so I think that that would be fine with us.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. All right, any questions by any of the board members?
I want to thank you for going to 48 and marking those things because I was able to get back out there. And it was, it was very, you marked it really well. Um, I, there is going to be a lot of clearing there. So the, on the, the landscape berm, are there any, I don't see anything marked here. Are you going to do any, like, official plantings of some sort of trees or plants? Because in speaking to, to the Butters, ideally, they would like something that would be forested and growing. They know the undergrowth is going to come back, but in the meantime, is anything going to be planted on that? Because the, there's going to be a lot of stuff cut down, but again, totally appreciate what you did. It was very well done.
We were, we were planning on at least a vegetated berm just for stabilization. I think plantings would be more effective between the berm and his lot, like in that, and we're happy to work with him to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Versus putting, I think sometimes a plantings on the berm look a little artificial.
Yeah, no, that's fine, but.
So we're happy to, you know, to, well, we're going to, we're, we're absolutely going to vegetate the berm just to stabilize it.
Right.
It'll be a grassy berm.
Mm-hmm.
But to, as far as plantings, to help that understory thicken up, I think it's probably.
I mean, we had, um.
Did we have some?
Rotted hydrants in there in the previous iteration, and I think they just dropped off.
That's right.
The last plant, we had plantings in there, and so we, we, they just, we got sidetracked with putting the berm in there, and we didn't, we can, we just need to put those plantings back in. So yes, we had planned to, and we will. And I think it was rotted hydrants or zetties or something.
Yeah, some, some low-growing rod.
Too high to shade the, shade the panels, but that would, you know, that would be, uh...
So there's not a lot of area in there? Just if you see the, so this is, the green is the existing tree line, and then selected clearing in here, berm installation, which, you know, if you envision a berm, I mean, it's narrower at the top, wider at the bottom, and taking up a fairly good-sized footprint. And then the tree line really comes to the back of the berm. So I don't, it may look like there's a lot of trees tagged from, the tallest trees tagged for removal.
Mm-hmm.
I just want it to be effective, you know, if we're going to put other stuff in there, and I, I mean, obviously, they're happy to do it. So I think, you know, maybe talking about shrubbery or discuss it with a neighbor, what, what works best out there.
Yeah.
Um, once those tallest trees are pulled out of there and we can see what's down there, the materials put in place for the berm.
Mm-hmm.
It just, I'm. It just, I'm thinking like, it might not really be that effective, but having like a green background when he's looking out that way, if he can even see through the remaining tree and shrub layer, maybe assess it at that point.
Mm-hmm.
Or leave it open to discuss with them, or via the, via Jim, or, I mean, I don't know the best way to, to leave that, but they're committed.
We want, we want the neighbors to be happy, so we're happy to, to work with them on individual, I think, I think some of these things are really hard to solve, like here.
Right.
Pre-construction, I think it's easier to solve, like in the field, you're building it, and you talk to the neighbor, and it's like, hey, how about putting that stuff there, absolutely, happy to do it.
Yeah, that's, that's what we were talking about when I was there, like, when the trees come down, it'll look different than when you're looking at trees that are tagged.
Right.
So then, how could we add it to conditions or decision that they would work with the applicant at 48 Bo to add selective, effective plantings in front of the berm?
I think maybe just that.
Sounds good.
Exactly, yeah.
That was easy.
Yeah, I mean, I really, I think it's probably the best we can do at this point.
Yeah.
And, you know, they've committed to working with them, I mean, maybe we just call out specifically, like, low growing evergreen shrubs, or something like that, just so it's something that makes sense, because I think understory is going to be more important than trying to get height in there.
Jim? Could you get the last part of that?
No.
Work with the butter at 48 Bo two.
I'm going to need a minute to find something good, can I get back to you?
Sure, okay, well.
Yeah, but, but it was great just to have something, they had said, you know, we want it to kind of still look forested, so if there can be some stuff with height, because it was really well done.
So, so something like final landscaping will be reviewed by the butter, house number, whatever it is, 48.
Yeah.
And, and, and applicant upon completion of project, something like that.
And submitted to the plan of.
Right.
Because you really don't know exactly, once you cut the trees down, put the berm up, you don't know exactly what, what that's going to look like, or how much is going to be visible, so.
So then how could we write that so more than one tree is planted, but it also wouldn't come back and say, you guys need to replant an entire forest, how do we do it so it's not too subjective, so there's a good balance, what's done is needed, and it's not overkill?
Jim's good at that.
Okay.
Well, I think, once the, you know, once these gentlemen get out there and, and meet with the, the butter, once they've cut the trees down and done the berm, before we, before we can get a permit, it has to be agreed on with the, the butter about the landscaping.
And we get written notice of that?
Well, I think.
To know that the butter's happy?
Once they're at that point, they will have presumably already gotten a building permit.
Okay.
So, because they won't start construction until they have their permits in hand, perhaps.
Final electrical COC, all that, all the plantings.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
That's really the sign off of.
Yeah, we can't get final sign off for something like that unless all of these conditions are met, in particular, you know.
Try this, the applicant will work with a butter at 48 Bo Street to finalize landscaping screening plan and submit to planning board for approval prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit.
No, prior to the issuance of the COC from the electrical inspector, because that's the one that triggers their solar compliance.
So does that mean we have to come back to the planning board, or do we just work through?
You just work through, through the planner, get that all done, as long as the, a butter's okay and stuff, so when Steve goes out to do the final on the solar COC.
Mm-hmm.
Before he can issue the COC and get it to the building commissioner, he's got to meet all those requirements.
So maybe, maybe it says, instead of planning board approval, or coordination with the director, or something like that, because planning board approval, to me, means we're coming back before this body.
Would love to see, yeah.
I know, I know, it's the Tuesday night, but, just, just so we're all clear, and like, what, how it's going to function.
Yeah, to, to work with the planning director and staff.
Yeah, I mean, because we're in contact with Jim basically every day, so.
And we don't need to walk off the field there again, we've already been there two or three times.
Yeah, it's a nice place to visit.
All right, so we'll try it again, so the applicant will work with a butter at 48 Bo Street to finalize landscaping screening plan and submit to planning director for approval prior to issuance of a COC for electrical inspector.
Yep.
Everybody?
Excuse my name, what is COC?
Certificate of Compliance.
Okay.
It's a specific document that has to be submitted to have a source for them to tie into.
Okay, thank you.
So just have that spelled out.
You're good?
I think I'm good. Does that work for everybody? You got good notes in there?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions by planning board members?
They did a great, they did a great job, I want to thank you for that.
Thanks.
I do like the cross sections that you did, that was good, that was very helpful.
Yeah, all the other developers got to call us, yelling at us now for setting the bar too high.
Going to say to the public, all you people that are coming before us.
Do standard.
One more thing, is it, because I had this put in the past, is there something in conditions just guaranteeing that Bunny's Road is 100% screened before that COC happens? Based on this, it sounds great, I like to get everything written.
Well, there's nothing left, in other words, I would submit that what we've presented to you accomplishes that, so our goal is just, we have to build it as shown, and if we build it as shown, then the answer is yes.
So I think maybe just reference the plan of record with this date.
Do we need to specify before the COC?
No.
Okay.
It's, the difference is because the, the planting down here is not on the plan, so that language makes sense, because it, it prompts everybody to make sure that happens.
This is shown, documented on the stamped. Yeah, I see all the heights, I just want to make sure, because, 100%.
I mean, they have to build it to the plan, that's approved.
Right.
Period.
Yeah, that's one of the conditions, they have to build.
As long as it's guaranteed before COC.
And then there's a requirement prior to completion, you know, before they get the final certificate of occupancy, that our engineer has to review the project, for, to make sure it's to the as-built plans.
Okay.
All right, any other questions by the planning board members?
Yeah.
Okay, we haven't closed the public hearing, so if there's anybody out in the public, out in the audience, and there aren't any, that have any comments, seeing none.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to close the public hearing for, where am I? Zero Pond Street.
I'll second that.
So a motion to second, any further discussion? Okay, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, so that was unanimous. So, now we'll need a vote for approval.
Do we have a decision?
Yes, we do.
Oh, yeah, yeah, before we do that, yeah, do you want to go over the?
Sure, do you want me to read the conditions?
Yeah, the conditions, and then I, we're not, we're not going to be able to sign that tonight, though.
No.
We'll have to.
So what I'll do.
Type in that last piece, and then we'll, we'll have to sign it.
And then I'll just get it out to people. All right, so let me go ahead with the conditions. Okay, condition one, prior to the issuance of a building permit, a true copy of the recorded decision as registered at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds shall be submitted to the Planning and Permitting Department. The applicant shall provide the Planning and Permitting Department with documentation of ever source's approval to install and maintain the interconnection with the existing utility easement, as well as, as well as any new easements required to access proposed utility poles. The applicant shall provide documentation to the town, to the town of ever source's approval of all utility easements, and to install and maintain the interconnection. D, the developer shall submit and maintain a ground fuels manicuring and maintenance schedule to the Planning and Permitting Department and the Carver Fire Department. Manicuring of ground fuels should occur twice per year at a minimum, and during the growing season. E, developer shall submit an emergency response plan to the Carver Fire Department and Planning and, Planning and Permitting Department. Any outstanding balance of the review and inspections deposit account shall be paid prior to the issuance of a building permit. The applicant shall submit to the permitting department product information for all the major components, including make a model of PV panels, transformer, inverter, mounting system, chemicals for cleaning, and maintenance of equipment, be provided as part of the building permit submission. Applicant shall submit the name, address, and contact information for the system installer as part of the building permit submission. Number two, prior to issuance of an electrical permit, the applicant shall provide the board with a decommissioning bond in the amount of 125% of decommissioning costs as indicated in a third-party decommissioning study to run with the life of the project. B, the applicant shall ensure compliance with the National Electric, Electric Code requirements on access, fencing, and security. A statement of compliance shall be submitted to the building commissioner and planning director by the electrical inspector. Final electric, electrical line diagram stamped by professional, by a licensed professional engineer, shall be submitted to the town with the building per, building permit submission. Number three, the project must be constructed as approved in the site plan, any other revisions will require approval from the board as a modification of this decision. Number four, the applicant shall conform to the recommendations of, of the Carver Fire Department found in two comment letters dated December 3, 2019, and January 21, 2020. The Carver Fire Department must approve in writing any modifications to its recommendations. A, in accordance with a CFD later, letter dated January 21, 2020, all access roads shall be at least 12 feet wide and cleared of obstructions by two feet on both sides, be constructed of an all-weather surface, and be maintained for unimpeded travel of emergency vehicles. In addition, 16 feet of vertical clearance is required for large emergency vehicle access. B, the applicant shall work with the Carver Fire Department regarding location of gates and arrangements for lock boxes. C, the applicant shall install signage consistent with requirements for photo fatigue arrays, and submit a detailed signed package as part of the building per, permit application. Number five, the applicant shall adhere to the Conservation Commission Order of Conditions, Mass DEP File Number 126-587, and Special Ongoing Conditions dated August 21, 2019. The Conservation Commission shall approve any modifications to the Order of Conditions and Special Ongoing Conditions. Number six, clearing limits shall be marked in the field prior to clearing, and the planning board notify to allow them the opportunity to verify clearing extents prior to beginning clearing activities. Item number seven, the applicant shall provide a final construction period pollution prevention and erosion and sediment control plan to the Planning and Permitting Department prior to commencement, commencement of construction. Number eight, dust control is required during construction, and the roadway apron is to be kept swept and clear of any dust, dirt, or debris. Number nine, construction equipment and trucks shall not operate, idle or operate on site prior to 7:00 AM, best efforts shall be made to limit construction noise on Saturdays and Sundays. Number 10, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy and use, A, the applicant shall provide training to the fire department for mitigating emergencies on site, B, the applicant shall provide a landscape maintenance agreement, runs between the solar company and a butter's, to the Planning and Permitting Department, C, the applicant shall obtain a written acceptance of the final condition of access roads from the Fire, Carver Fire Department, D, as-built plan shall be submitted to the Towns Engineer and Permitting Department in both electronic and hardcore reform prior to the final inspection, E, in accordance with Section 3180, compliance of the zoning bylaws, the Towns Engineer shall inspect the project to ensure that it has been completed in compliance with the approved site plan and its conditions. 11, the applicant shall provide the Carver Planning Department with an annual report certifying compliance with the operation maintenance plan, and providing annual generation of the facility in accordance with Section 3580.43, operation maintenance plan shall include a schedule for maintenance and inspection activities. Number 12, the applicant shall provide the Planning and Permitting Department and Carver Fire Department with updated contact information, should there be a change in ownership in or management of the solar system, should be solar array system, with 30 days of any change, and that's it for the conditions. Oh.
And the last one.
Excuse me. The applicant will work with a butter at 48 Pond Street, Bo Street, to finalize landscaping screening plan and submit to planning director for approval prior to the issuance of a certificate of compliance by the electrical inspector. Anything else?
Two questions, page two, one, two, three, four, fifth dot, it says, two comment letters from Carver Fire Department dated December 3, 2019, and January 21, 2019, should that be 2020?
Should be 2020.
2020.
You on page two or three?
Yeah, page two, one, two, three, fifth dot, fifth bullet. And then my other question, and it could be accurate, though, page three, second bullet from the bottom, the project has adequate street frontage on Wenham Road of 588.17 feet and 183.68 feet on Wenham Road, is that Wenham Road twice? Should it say Wenham Road twice?
No, it's just the once.
So is the other one, like, should one say Pond Street, like?
No, no, that's just a duplicate.
Because it's 588 feet and 183 feet, so what should that say, just because?
So, no, there's two frontages on Wenham Road, so one's 588.17, and the other one's 183.68.
Okay.
And then there's another one that's smaller, but.
Yeah.
These are the two that heat the, the zoning front.
Okay, I didn't know if the street should be changed, okay.
It's such a huge property, it touches like every street in Carver.
Yeah.
The two separate frontages are shown here, it's a, we won't use this, there's no, there's no access road there.
Yeah, just the way it was written, I didn't know if one.
It's not active.
So, okay, that's all.
Jim, if you need to add the date to the site plan that you referenced, it's the one I just handed out, I think January 23 is the revision date, or final revision date. In the landscape plans that are still rolled are 124, January 24.
All right, so the base plan set, which was originally October 15, 2019, has amended at what date?
January 23, 2020.
And those are the copies that, Jim has one.
I've got a big one.
Okay, so if those just make their way back to the permitting department for the file, that'd be great, you can keep the little ones.
So these revised ones, was that, was that what, was those plantings you had spoken about that were omitted by accident, was that on this one?
No, it was from this planting. Yeah, for the 48 Bo Street area.
Right.
Yeah, they're not in the design plans, they're in the landscape plans.
Okay, landscape.
They hired someone else to do the design plans, and then we did the landscape plan, so just for the record.
12 persons, 13, so you got that. And then, just a. And then, just a question regarding the plan sheets. Oh, these are the sightline sheets. These are all January 24th, 2020. And then the landscaping, oh, the revised sheets, those are C 202, 204, 206, and 207.
Yep.
Those are dated January 23rd, 2020.
Yep.
And those are the Western and Samson sheets.
That's right.
Okay, so we got that. And then we got the revision to the basic plan set. Okay, have we got?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the solar project for Zero Pond Street as presented with the conditions that were presented.
Second up.
So we have motion and second, further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so it's unanimous. And that, let's see, that one, so that was with, that was with Kelly because, Kevin's not here tonight.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I just, before you go, that was the most thorough time we've had out there. The plans were excellent. You did more than has been done previously.
We've had some other good ones, too.
You read the planning board's thoughts with these elevations, and I appreciate that I went out in the field twice. I got some exercise, plus I got to see the project, so it was great. So you did a very thorough job, and I thank you for that.
Mr. Chair, through you, just a little informational note for your contractors when they come out, the significant changes in the 2028 National Electrical Code, especially for large ground mount solar array projects.
We already have flagged our Electrical Inspector, as you mentioned that. So I'm waiting for a summary report on what those changes are.
It's significant.
Well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time. We really appreciate it. We're excited about the project, and we're glad you came to, glad we get a unanimous vote. Makes us feel like we did a good job.
Okay, thank you. Oh, so we'll have to sign that during the week?
Right, I can either, you know, let you know when it's ready, and if you come in, or I can bring it to you.
Okay.
It's dangerous. So Jim, you can just shoot me an email when that's ready, and I can come.
Pick it up.
Or you can email me a copy once it's, you could also email me a copy of the letter from Bob Francis on the rear lot discussion, that'd be great.
Okay.
And you can just let me know when you send it down to the clerk's office, just so I can keep track of the.
All right. So on the agenda is an application of Clean Energy Company, and this particular one was at Zero Snapit Road. And I believe this is going to be, they're not appearing tonight, and it's going to be continued to February 11th.
That's correct. This is where they had the meeting with Mr. Perry. Mr. Shanahan met with Mr. Perry. I believe myself and Chairman were also at the meeting. Mr. Perry kind of offered a bit of a solution that Mr. Shanahan was going to take and revise the plans to accommodate that, although Mr. Perry did heavily caveat that, that he still has to run it past his wife, and he still has to get the approval of his in-laws. So we're still waiting to hear, you know, if Mr. Shanahan has completed those plans and met with the Perrys yet, I'll have to reach out to them and see where they're at with that particular project.
Have they met with the conservation? Because I know the part over there, moving panels around was going to involve conservation. You know, has he met with them yet?
I'm not sure if they met yet, but I think he did have a conversation. He tried to make a phone call to Brooke, so I'll have to follow up with her to see where they stand, if he's filed something with the Conservation Commission. Because, you know, before they finalized plans, I would assume they want to make sure they're okay with the Conservation Commission, what they're trying to do.
Yeah, that was my understanding, too. I just want to make sure that, that was the next step, I thought, was he had to talk to Conservation, to make sure the proposed changes were covered by them.
Right.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing for Zero Snapit Road to February 11th at 7:00.
Second up.
Motion and second, those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And so that's it for solar hearings for this evening. We'll go on to other business, Planning Board Member Notes. Any of the Planning Board members have anything to do?
I just have one, Mr. Chair. I'm going to make it public that it's election time. I believe I'm up this year. I will not be seeking reelection. My time is done with a new job and everything. I just don't have the time to dedicate, and I don't think it's right for the applicant or this board if I can't make the site visits because of my obligations, so. We'll put it out there for people to throw their hat in the ring.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Generally, generally, yeah, we'll see what happens, but usually the, it gives a semi-permanent member to become a permanent member. But then also, I guess, other people too. Then we'll still need another person anyway, no matter what happens.
I just wanted to get it out as soon as I made my decision, which was not likely.
Well, thank you for doing that, yeah. It gives everybody, and especially the people in town, something to think about, because we will need another member. We just gone, we just went through this, Enga Kelly here, and with you departing, but you're on so many other boards, so.
Standby.
We'll see. All right, thank you for that information.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Just want to hope Kevin Robinson, our fellow member, is doing well in recovery, hopefully comes back soon. Will, thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Well, we haven't got to that point yet.
We've still got some more to do.
At least another five solos, right?
Absolutely.
I just have questions. I don't know if it's under this part of our agenda or?
Go ahead, give it a try.
Okay. So brought a couple, people have asked me, and on the dual-purpose solar projects being presented in town. I know there's been talk about, it's so new, people don't know if the crops are actually going to grow properly. So it's brought, someone asked me, and I didn't have an answer, what if after one season they find out the harvest isn't good? Whatever it is, cranberries, raspberries, you know, rhubarms, whatever, and they found out they can't grow anything under solar panels? Does that change it from a dual-purpose solar project?
Well, under the language, Jim, from the state, for them to meet the requirements, they have to be able to produce a crop. If they don't, then they don't meet the requirements for the state. So that monies that are becoming in from the state and stuff will have a detrimental impact to them. Now, for us, as a planning board, we look at the project as it is today, that it has to meet the requirements, and there's a, in most of our decisions, and all of our decisions, there's always a mechanism or a condition that they have to meet. If they don't meet a condition, they have to come back to this board, and the board can have the right, in my opinion, to revoke that special permit because they're not growing a crop.
Is there a check, check and balance, maybe not the right word, a year later to find out if that crop was actually growing?
Well, they're supposed to, they're supposed to submit to the state that they're producing the crop. It's part of their application.
Yearly, do they have to do that?
Yearly.
Right.
If I understand it correctly.
Right, and that actually backed up, so Brooke Monroe invited me on a kind of a site visit over there, 13 Gates, which was a project that was approved before my time, and just to kind of show what they were doing over there, because they're starting to prepare the area where they're going to have the crops under the solar panel. And Ian Ward was there, kind of discussing the project, and he more or less backs up, what he said backs up what Will said about that. There's, you know, both the cranberry industry, as well as the UMass Extension are heavily involved with this project, and it's something that, you know, these groups want to see succeed because it's really important to the, you know, especially the cranberry growers, that this is successful, because this brings another source of revenue, you know, for them when there's, you know, tough markets for the cranberries. So it's heavily regulated, and then the other piece of it, the other component are the financiers of these projects. So if it doesn't work out, then the people who are financing the project won't get repaid. So that's another incentive, so that's part of it. So you have the financing part of it, then also the state regulatory structure that is requiring it. And so they're working on, you know, so for example, 13 Gates, they provided us with a list of the crops that they're going to try to grow, and so these are all kind of crops that have been vetted to, you know, need less sunlight than, you know, say, other types of crops. And so they're going to start off, you know, you said with the Gate Street project, the first year that they're going to grow, I think it's rye, which acts as a kind of a natural fertilizer for the site, so it will grow, and then they grind it up and, you know, it adds to the base, you know, with the soil. And then a year from there, then they'll start their crop growing of their regular crop rotation. And so they're constantly evaluating different types of crops that will, you know, grow in a more shaded environment than, say, you know, traditional crops grown in a traditional agricultural area.
I just didn't know if every year someone was checking that, or if they have to check in, I should say.
And if the board would like, because I asked Ian Ward if he knew someone who could maybe kind of come in and speak to that, and he was suggesting, I think it's Brian Wick, who's the head of the Cranberry Growers Association, or director of the Cranberry Growers Association, so he's suggesting maybe have some come in and then, you know, present to the Planning Board and, you know, answer questions about some of these issues that are going on. But it's something that everybody wants to, everyone who's involved in the industry wants to see work, they don't want to have it fail.
So I know there's a recent article that came out that I told everybody that now they're looking at, the cranberries are sold on color, and they're concerned that the panels will not make the berries as red, so therefore the crop won't be as valuable and this whole sort of, I mean, it's still the new thing, nobody knows.
Right.
Still so new. But again, if someone asked me, I didn't have an answer for it, so I figured I'd bring it before the board to find out.
Well, another thing that might I suggest, that in our conditions, we put a yearly report of the crop. Has to be submitted to.
Yeah, I just didn't know if we had the jurisdiction for that, or if that was someone.
We can condition anything.
Through the, like, who polices that?
They're mean.
I think we may already have a condition in there. Because it's supposed to be.
To respond, on the Gate Street project, I asked that question of the applicant, and I remember the response he gave was, he wasn't entirely sure at that point, but he was under the impression that the state was randomly going to pick some to audit every year, that it might not be everybody every year. Because I had that same question, might have changed since then, because that was early on, but I had that same concern, and he said it wasn't going to be everybody every year. Hopefully that's changed.
Okay, so it's compliance with the operation maintenance plan, but we can add a condition to deal with agricultural reporting, that we get a copy of that report. And actually, I cited the Conservation Commission Order of Conditions, which has that as a condition. So they have to comply with the Conservation Commission Order of Conditions, and the special orders and condition, and that's one of the conditions in that Conservation Commission condition. Trying to tighten it up a little bit.
Well, it's so new, and it's changing all the time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Planted Director Notes. So we had, so the developer of this is project called Weathervein, which is?
Hatrie Pines.
Hatrie Pines, but now they changed the name to Weathervein. They're proposing changes to their Phase 2 project, and one of the things they're looking into is this transfer of development rights program. So they have their property that has some, they have a number of affordable units that are required as part of the inclusionary zoning ordinance, zoning bylaw, and I believe it's six that they have to provide with their project. And, but under a change in state rules, they've eliminated, before you get age-restrict, but now you can't age-restrict on those affordable units, but the rest of the development's going to be over 55, so they thought it'd be better if they could transfer those six units elsewhere as part of a TDR program that's in our, both our bylaws and also into our master plan. And they have a site on Silva Street that they're looking to transfer those development rights to, and then as part of a kind of a development in accordance with the Town's master plan that calls for higher density along the Route 58 corridor. So they came in just to kind of give a presentation, I think it was last Thursday, Bruce was there, myself, Bob Francis, the Building Inspector, and also Michael Malinowski, the Town Administrator. So they just kind of gave a presentation of that, and then Town Administrator and the applicant decided that they would like to have a couple meetings, not before the Planning Board, but one with the border selectmen on February 25th, where they would kind of give a presentation on their project, just to get it out in the public, which will be followed up by a public charrette or gathering to, where they would present the plan to the general public, and then try to answer questions at that, in that forum, just so they get a sense from the community as to what the reaction would be, if people would be supportive or non-supportive, so that when they do apply to the Planning Board, they'll already have, you know, kind of shaped the project better so that they don't end up, you know, coming to a Planning Board public hearing, and then, you know, get blasted out of the water, if people don't like what they see. So that's kind of what's upcoming. The problem is that the border selectman presentation is on the 25th of February, which is also a Planning Board meeting night. I could talk to the Town Administrator, see if we can coordinate so that maybe the first half of the Planning Board meeting could be up at the border selectmen, they would put this presentation at the very beginning of the meeting, so that the board could hear the presentation, and then we would go down to our meeting room and continue with the regular Planning Board meeting at that time. So I just want to put that out there and just, I'll check with the Town Administrator to see if that's something that's doable, and I could report back at the February 11th meeting. And then, the other thing I've kind of been working on, I have a deadline of Friday is to, you know, go through and do the zoning amendments for the town meeting. So one of the things we had to work on is change in flood insurance map, so I've completed that. The next item is the solar bylaw, so there's some reorganization, and then creating. and then creating equalization between conventional and dual-use, because last year at town meeting, there were some changes that had applied only to dual-use that were not made for conventional, and that's, you know, kind of created some confusion with some applicants, so try to make them kind of similar. And then, so I'm trying to get all that. One of the changes would be to look at access versus having strict frontage, you know, for the, for the access to a solar site. So kind of drafting this up, and then Friday we have to submit it for advertising, so that in four weeks, we can have a public hearing on it. So that's what I'm kind of working on, trying to get that. So, and then, two other things I'm trying to work on, one is the excessive dwelling unit bylaw to broaden it up. Right now it's restricted to elderly over 55, or handicapped persons. This would open it up so that there's no restrictions on it in terms of who's living there, and, you know, it's another opportunity to provide housing for people who need it. And then, what was the other one? Making some adjustments to the dwelling units over commercial structures. Right now requires TDR credits in order to do that development. So I was thinking about adjusting it so that the applicant can propose the actual outright purchase of either land for conservation, conservation easements, or some other mechanism similar to that, that they can present to the board as an alternative to transfer development rights. So that, you know, right now we don't have any, we do have a project that's coming on board that's proposing transfer development rights, but that won't be, you know, that's still in the pipeline, and, you know, we have this other project that's kind of ahead, so we're trying to see if we can help, help this particular owner by making adjustments, and then it will apply to everybody, any other development out there to do that.
So then I'm going to reach out to you to talk about the sign one that I wanted a placeholder for, because we haven't worked on any language about that.
Right, so that, you know, that's a challenge, because it just had a little convergence of multiple deadlines thrown at me, and haven't had a chance to even look at that. So.
Well, I can, I can send you something that I draft up.
Okay.
And then with your guidance, you can tell me how thorough it needs to be by Friday.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, because my understanding that, once we get it advertised, and then the planning board opens a public hearing, then it's open to people to come in with changes, and so the real work will occur.
Yeah.
Later.
Later, but it's just this deadline for.
So then I will get something to you, and you can just confirm that it's enough to get us to the public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great.
Because I think that's what we need, just enough to get to the public hearing.
Got it.
Work on it from there. And I think that's pretty much it.
There was just one other thing. I know that I, when we were talking last week about the transfer of developmental rights, you were talking about maybe having somebody come from SERPED, because it, it, it isn't a straightforward thing, it involves sometimes a little math. So I know we were talking, maybe somebody from SERPED to come to, for a discussion?
Right.
Have you done anything with that, or?
I haven't, well, I haven't outreach yet, but I can do it. When would you like to have it? Because we can try for February, but, so maybe the better day would be the 11th versus the 25th, because the 25th is going to be a little complex if we have that, go to that presentation, or we could do something in March.
Whenever, at your earliest convenience, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, if we can make it to the selectmen's meeting and, and see the proposal.
Do you want to do like the first meeting in March then?
Yeah, if that works out with everything, I guess, that would be fine. It is going to hit us one way or another, I believe, you know, no matter if it's a simple project or a complicated project.
By then, yeah. By then we'll know what the full impact is.
Right, yeah, and we just don't know right now. Okay, thank you. All right, we have the minutes of January 14th. Has everybody had a chance to look at those?
Mr. Chair, the only thing I had is that the very end, on the motion to adjourn, you have me down twice, Mr. Sinclair, Sinclair.
Okay.
That's the only thing I saw, but other than that, I make a motion to.
Mr. Walsh actually noted, I have locust instead of locusts.
Make a motion to approve as amended.
I'll second.
Also, the, and the attendees, we have James H., Jen Bogart again.
See, it doesn't show up on mine.
Does it?
We talked about it at the last meeting. Yeah, no, it was okay on mine, because it's that enable editing, don't enable editing thing.
There's just too much.
Yeah.
You get what I just said.
Yeah, it's, it's wonky, Jim.
So we had a motion to, and do we have a second?
Yeah.
Do we have a second? Okay. So we have motion and second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, our next meeting, before, before, yeah, our next meeting date will be February 11th. Now, we have the motion to adjourn, sec?
Second.
You have a second, those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everyone, thank you.